At seven o'clock on February 16, 2016. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. Tonight, we have made some modifications to the agenda. First, we reschedule our closed session hearing to March 1st. And then we moved also recognitions also to March 1st meeting. We also added board reports for our recent VSBA professional development session, the Capitol Conference that we attended. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Chabak?
Second.
Ms. Braggad, second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Agenda is approved. At this time and at each of our regularly scheduled meeting, the school board sets aside act the 30 minutes for citizens to address the board about issues pertaining public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room and on the laptop will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when the three minutes has passed. I do not have any individuals sign up to speak this evening. Anybody in the public would like to address at this time. Hearing none. Public address is now closed. The next item on the agenda is our personnel report. Do I have a motion to accept our personnel reports?
So moved.
Mr. Lyons moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chabak, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Our personnel report approved. The next item on the agenda, payment of the bills. May I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Mr. Lyons moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Graham, second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We pay the bills. Next item on the agenda is financial summary report. May I have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the financial summary report?
So moved.
Mr. Lyons moved. May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Franklin, second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We approve our financial summary report. The next item on the agenda, our superintendent reports, recommendations, and announcements. Dr. Meyer.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to just follow up on some places I've been the last couple of weeks and some folks I've met. First, I've met with the Harding and the Beeks faculty in the last couple of weeks and enjoyed my time at both schools. They had good questions of me and I think we got to know each other a lot better through our meetings. So I'm continuing to go to the different schools and to meet our folks and it's been a true pleasure. I had the, a couple of Fridays ago, had the pleasure of going to see Almost Maine at Christiansburg High School. I really enjoyed the production in the one acts, I guess. And since our last meeting, I've been able to see twice Blacksburg and Christiansburg, boys and girls play each other in basketball. And, you know, I'm not used to going to games and not being able to cheer, I'll tell you that. And I'm not used to being neutral. Usually, I'm pretty passionate about one team or the other. But it was fun to watch our kids in competition and I guess, you know, with the boys, each team won one game each at their home place. And I just want to tell you, we have a great group of students and they, a lot of school spirit compared to a lot of places that I've seen. And they do it right. And for the most part respectful of other players on the court. So, but they had a lot of fun, so it was fun watching them. Had the chance to go out to New River Community College with Jennifer Weaver and Rick Weaver and have some discussions about what we do in terms of partnerships with the community college and looking also at our future with the community college, some things we can move forward in doing and even making the relationship a lot stronger. And one thing we've talked about is we'll continue to further the conversation in dealing with a student senior year in high school and what that will look like and how we can incorporate the community college more so in that senior year. Now, a lot of times, our students, they go into their senior year and they need government and English and that's it. And at times, it can be a waste. And I'd rather see kids in internships, go ahead and starting, if they're not planning to go to a four-year college, go ahead and start working to trades and some of the programs the community college has that we don't have. And so we'll continue to look at that and build that partnership and see what we can do in the near future. Of course, all of us were at the feasibility presentation for Christiansburg schools at Christiansburg Primary last week and I thought that went really well and we had a number of folks out. And I really appreciate everyone who came out for that and I look forward to continuing that process and see what we can do to make our facilities better in Christiansburg community. Then last week, went to the VSBA new superintendent, new board member orientation in Richmond and, you know, I thought it was very productive and it was a good time to meet some other board members. And I think one thing we get out of that, sometimes more than anything else, are meeting other board members from other school divisions and it doesn't make you feel like you're on an island. They're going through some of the same things we are here. So I appreciate the board members who attended that with me. See, next on the agenda is the work session format. Our next meeting will start our new regular session, the work session calendar. We'll have our honors and recognitions at the first meeting of the month from here on out, which the next will be March 1st. Our March 15 meeting will be held in the conference room on the school board side of consistent updates and informational items. And the last minute, we talked a little bit about this work session format, what it would look like and just want to finalize that with you folks tonight and make sure, just I remind you of that calendar shift. One, ask just to make sure we're clear on where we are with public comment and public address during that meeting. You know, one thing that I've looked into, there are school divisions who do this work session format. In fact, it was very interesting, last, at the VSBA conference, I think it was asked amongst the group that was there, it was a very large group, and most everyone has a work session format where it's truly a work session at one of the two meetings of the month. And we did, you know, sort of asked some folks, you know, do you have public comment or not? And it varies from division to division in terms of public comments. And so, you know, something else too is, you know, do we want to, you know, because it's not a requirement that we videotape the actual work session. And so, and that's another question, do we want to videotape the work session as well? And, you know, what I've seen, my recommendation is the, for videotaping, it's not the videotaped format. And not that we're not going to be transparent, but I think it will make for a, we're going to be at a roundtable, having conversations with each other. If you watch the budget work session, it's really not a quality anyway, I don't think, in terms of the video. And my recommendation there would be to not video. As for the actual public comment or not, you know, I see it, you know, I have no recommendation. I'll let you guys make the choice there as to what you would like to do in terms of the public comments at the work session. You know, I think it will naturally take care of itself at some point where folks will know that the first meeting of the month is a more formal occasion where they'll have your attention and time more so than the work session. So, thoughts, discussion?
Well, as far as public comment, whenever a citizen is speaking to me, they have my attention. And I feel very strongly that we should not limit citizens to one time, once a month speaking to us. And several folks who were at that meeting that night have said that they agree that they should not be limited to once a month.
Okay.
Board members?
I'll piggyback on, you know, what we talked about at the conference in Richmond because I asked around too and was paying attention during those discussions. And the three things I wrote down, I'm getting ahead of myself, I guess, a little bit here because I was going to share this later, but, you know, three things about the work sessions, was that they're informal, not televised, and usually there isn't any voting that happens during that time. So I think that we're, I think that's consistent with what your recommendations are. I'm supportive of not having them televised. I think that this is an opportunity for us to kind of just, you know, work together and without kind of that glare. And I agree with you that it has nothing to do with not wanting to be transparent. Obviously, I think those, you know, they're going to be open to the public and anybody can come and attend and I'm sure the press will be there. As far as public comment goes, you know, what I said before was that I could maybe favor something that might be a little bit different in what we do. I don't know how much support there is for that. I think barring that kind of support, I'm okay moving forward without public comment at these personally because I think that in this day and age with all of our electronic communication, I think there's a lot of different ways that people can reach out to us every single day. And personally, I mean, I make a point to respond to every email I get, even if it's just to let them know that I read it. But usually, I give even more of a response. So, you know, I haven't heard from anybody that says, "Well, I can make it on this Tuesday," but not the others. So I don't think we're, I personally don't think we're limiting people. If it becomes a problem, we can always revisit it.
I would disagree with that. I think that by the very nature, the term "public comment" says that it's very public and some of those emails and stuff that we get are not to the public. And so not everyone sees our responses when we make responses. And so I'm in favor of us keeping a public comment session because I think it's, I mean, if nothing else, offering it makes sure that we are being transparent. And it's not going to hurt anything. My guess is, is that those public comment sessions will be shorter in nature and won't be as, there won't be as many people speaking at those because of the nature of the work session itself. But for us to say that we're not going to do it, I think is the wrong way to go.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, Ms. Karan and I attended a different session because we went to the chair and vice chair orientation and we had a really wonderful presentation on, in particular, parliamentary procedure and how it applies to these two different types of sessions. And the presenter was very clear that it's very common for boards to have much more formal sessions and much more informal sessions. And I think that's what we're moving toward here. As far as videotaping them, I tend to agree that the quality was not that great when we were in the room and I think it does kind of make people feel a little different when they're being videotaped as opposed to just having the minutes recorded. And we are, you know, obviously fully complying with what we need to do by simply recording minutes. So I would probably lean also towards not videotaping those, to having it much more of an informal session. As far as public address, I think I tend to agree with Mr. Lyons that it probably is going to end up being fairly short anyway because the intention is for us to sit down and work and discuss things, not to vote. And I would definitely say we probably should not plan on trying to vote at those meetings if they are truly going to be informal sessions. And so I think, I think you're right, it's going to sort of limit itself in the end. We're not going to get as much public comment. But I don't necessarily want to take that opportunity away. I think we should just leave it there for now and just see how it goes the first few times.
Would it require us, if, just question, if we were to take public session away from that meeting, would it not require us to change the policy?
Maybe our bylaws, would it?
The current reading of your policy related to that says that at every regular session of the board, because you are moving to a regular session slash work session format, I believe, I do not believe that an adjustment to the policy is required. I think there's some public notice that we would want to be sure that we did, but no adjustment to the policy.
And we asked Brad that question too, I believe. I believe I've had a discussion with him about that.
I've had several conversations, but I don't remember specifically.
But let's just do this, I'm okay, you know, Mr. Rock, if we could just see how it goes. And, you know, I think if we format the work session correctly and the way we place items on the agenda can make a difference as to the number of people who may want to come and comment on that issue or item, whatever. Knowing that we're not going to vote on it, big items that night, that may, that might hold down the number. You know, too, I've already talked about the format of the conference room and how it will look. We're going to have a safety room, where hopefully we can just do it in half of the room. We'll have a safety room in case something happens and have chairs set up. In other words, pull the curtain back for the other room if need be. And the chairs are already set up if that were the case. So is that okay? Just try it?
As far as the video is concerned, what if we just audiotaped it? I mean, we're going to have mics in there so it can be heard. Why not just do an audio recording as opposed to a video recording?
I'm sorry, is it a given that we are going to have mics in there? I mean, I was kind of hoping we, that it would be a small enough setting that we wouldn't need to do that.
We still may need to have mics because of folks being able to hear us at the table. I think that that would be an issue, us being heard. Some of us may not have an issue of being heard and some of us may because of our tone, of our voice and that kind of thing. So we're going to try to have mics at the table just so folks can hear us talking. And so, we can, so we can put an audio recording of it?
Would you want it published or just available on request?
I think just having it and, you know, we could post it instead of doing a video recording. I mean, it's-
That's the difficulty, is posting it. We'd have to research how that would work. Audio files, believe it or not, with what we use are significantly larger than the video files. And YouTube doesn't accommodate an audio file. So we'd have to do a little bit of research if you want them posted, if you wanted them recorded and just available should someone ask for them. We could do that as well.
Can I say at this point, we'll do the best we can to figure that out for the next meeting? And then update you, is that okay?
Ms. Graham and Ms. Bond, do you have any comments regarding?
Whatever, I mean, I think we need to do the public comment, but I've never liked the video.
Well, it really wasn't our idea.
Well, I agree on keeping the, you know, public and see how it goes. And, you know, at the end, it will turn to be not many people attending because of the format. And a video, you know, I watched those budget ones, it's so hard to target the video, almost like there was nothing on the, you know, where it is targeted.
There was a lovely shot of the back of Dan's head, actually.
Maybe we could have one of those courtroom artists come in and just draw up-
Sketch us. And interestingly, they took just a quick poll in our room of how many boards were videoing and I think there was us and one other and that was it. It's not coming.
I think, I mean, for me, I think the videotaping of the regular sessions is fine. I know a lot of people that watch them and I think that's great to be able to do that without having to drive out here. And, you know, some people watch them at, you know, one and a half or two times speed and that's efficient as well. So I think I'm supportive of that. And, you know, and just to be clear, I'm not, you know, I'm not against the idea of having more public input. I think if anything, let's see how it goes. If we're finding that nobody's really coming, I still like the idea of doing, you know, I mean, I still look at that half hour as kind of a time for the public. And, you know, over the years, we've heard many times from many different parent groups that have come before us and stuff, that, you know, having this kind of a, of a public comment is not necessarily ideal once you really start to get into an issue. And so, you know, having some, maybe having some time in these work sessions to do a little bit of engagement somehow. I don't know what that might look like, but that's something I'd love to see us move to. That's what I meant by doing something in a little bit of a different format on the public input.
And I'd have to explore, see what other types of formats are out there in terms of engagement with the public during a board meeting. Because I haven't seen it, that doesn't mean that it doesn't exist.
I think the, I know the Blacksburg Town Council during their, their work sessions will sometimes invite somebody to come and have a discussion with. So there's at least a back and forth. It could just be something as simple as that.
Right.
In the past, the board has actually planned community forums in each one of the communities so that there could have that, we could have that interaction with folks throughout the district, which worked very well.
And maybe something to consider moving back to. And that's the thing too, I mean, the work session, because it is so informal and we're not videotaping it, doesn't mean we have to have it in this building every time either.
That's true, yeah.
I mean, we could move to different schools and have it and have different conversations in different places. I think that would be sensible too.
Yeah, that could be good.
And, okay. Let's consider that. All right, ready to move on?
I think so.
Okay. At the first work session, what I'd like to do is, and I've seen this work really well, do an orientation slash update with our departments. And what I'd like to do is divide you up in groups of two, somebody will be by themselves, I guess. And maybe I'll go with you. And actually visit in 15-minute conversations, six of our departments. And for them to talk to you about what's going on in their department, what are the current projects that they're working on in their department, just sort of a back and forth share as to what happens. And you guys will have questions that you can ask them directly. And, you know, what I envision happening is during that 15 minutes, you're going to want more than 15 minutes because you get into a discussion and you have, one question grows to other questions. But what I'll ask is that we stop at that 15 minutes and then you can send the questions later, either via email or send them to me or to the person. Because you'll have questions after you leave each group. But just for the sake of time, rotating 15 minutes to each department to give you an idea of what's happening, I think is a great way for us to continue to talk to our administrative team and get updates into their day-to-day lives as to what they're actually doing. Because they're very busy folks and they've got a lot going on. But I want you to know exactly what's happening.
I was going to say, I'm all good with that as long as it's exactly and not a painted pretty picture. You know what I'm saying?
What's that now?
Like, as long as it's exactly, hey, they feel free to say, you know, "This just really isn't working." Or "This is something that we've talked about doing and I really wish we could." Instead of, "Oh, these are all the great things we're doing and this is all the great wonderful," because we know there's wonderful things, but I also know there's a lot of bad stuff that we can improve on. And I want to hear that stuff too. I'm tired of hearing all the great things, you know? I want to hear the things we can fix and that we need to work on because that's the stuff I hear out there.
Absolutely. So, so I guess to the staff is thinking about that too. Let's, and not just talk about the great things we're doing, but some things. Well, what we're doing, a lot of the work that we're doing is because of areas that we need to improve upon.
Well, yeah.
That's some of the great work. Where do we need to, where do we need to move forward and get better? And that's where our work is focused a lot of the times. And so, just if we can all keep that in mind.
To feel comfortable enough to say those things. That's my whole thing. If we're going to take time to do it, then I want somebody to feel like, "Oh, it's not going to come back and get me." Or, you know, or they're going to do this, or they're going to like, you know? I don't want to hear all that.
You know, I think we've already opened up some communication, different ways of communicating with our staff, you know? And hopefully, I can see some of you already starting to better relationships with our administrative staff and are feeling the freedom to call them and answer, ask questions. And I think that's great. And, you know, I'd encourage you to keep doing that. And when you have questions, you know, you can ask me a question, but, you know, they're the experts in their specific areas and know exactly what's happening in their specific areas. And, so, but there are a lot of good things going on, but there are some things we're working on because we need to improve. And so, team, if you all can remember to-
Say that.
Mention those things as well here, yeah. And that's okay. That's perfectly all right.
So explain to me again exactly how this is going to work. We're going to start at 6:30 and we'll split up into twos essentially. And we'll meet with how many different groups that night?
Six.
We'll do all six. Each group will go around to each of the six departments.
Exactly. It's been 15 minutes and then eight o'clock, we'll go right into our work session.
Okay.
All right. And this is something that, you know, I would envision and like for us to do maybe once every six months. Just to keep our, you know, just to continue the communication and relationship building between us and you. Okay? Any thoughts anymore?
We may want it more often than that.
Yes. It would be great to do it all the time, but then we're getting our work session started at eight o'clock already. So if you ever feel there's a need, we can always maybe throw one in at certain times. And I think it's a good time to do March and then maybe, you know, in that November- September, October. Yeah, October, November range, because we've just gotten school started, here's what we're working on. And then the March date is a great time because here's how the year's gone. I mean, we're fastly approaching testing season and almost starting to wrap things up, if you can believe it, by middle of March. And so I think that they're two good times to look at doing that. And so, all right. All right, let's see here. Okay, next is 2015-16 supplemental immigrant children and youth allocation. The 2015 Congressional Appropriations Act authorized additional one-time supplemental 2015-16 immigrant children and youth funds. The allotment for Montgomery County Public Schools is $699. These funds will be used to provide transportation to three caregiver meetings to take place during the spring semester. Transportation funds will allow the flexibility to offer sessions during the day while children are in school in an effort to increase attendance. The application received these funds is provided tonight for your approval.
May I have a motion to approve the supplemental application as presented, board members?
So moved.
Ms. Franklin moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Graham, second. Do we have any discussions, board members?
I just had a quick question as I reviewed these. So this is for, let's see, where was it? Immigrant children, unaccompanied children, is that correct? What can I?
Who can help me with this? Thank you, Dr. Graham.
That is the way it's titled. It really goes along with the English, the Second Language Learner Program.
Okay, because I saw that and then I saw that where we wanted to spend the money was to assist parents.
Correct.
So I just wanted to make sure there wasn't, I mean, I figured there wasn't, but I just wanted to better understand it. Thanks.
And it will be combined with Title III funds, though, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Addition to that. The two go hand in hand and it focuses on English language learners.
Any more discussions, board members? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We approve the-
Okay, thank you. Next, facilities update by Mr. Bernata. And let me publicly say thank you to Mr. Bernata and his crew. They've been working so hard the last couple of weeks, first, through the first snowstorm and now this second snowstorm. And I'm glad that we did not call them in yesterday, which I'm glad of. They got, they were able to take that President's Day off as well. I'm so glad. And really didn't see a need to call them in knowing that it wouldn't have made, so we would have had clean sidewalks and cleared off parking lots, but still, the roads would not be good enough to get to school. So I'm glad that your folks were able to take yesterday off and I appreciate everything that they've done. They've worked hard today, I know that. And they'll continue to work tomorrow, but, you know, hopefully, if the weather cooperates with us, we will be back in school by Thursday, I hope. So our buildings will be ready. The question is whether roads will be ready, so, all right? Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening. Similar format to previous months. The first one, we had to replace the stage lighting and rigging. That's a project in all those schools we wanted to do for a long time. And because of the rigging mostly, but the lighting as well. And that's, they're all complete. There's a little bit of programming, the lighting at the Shawsville Middle School to do, but otherwise, all the- But otherwise, all the, all the lighting is, is up and complete. All the rigging i- is gone, so that's great. Uh, the electric panels and most of these projects are on our capital maintenance project list and will be done i- in the summer. Uh, a lot of them are in design. The electric panels are in design, uh, to be done this summer. Uh, the brick masonry improvements at C H S and Shawsville Middle School, they're also in design. And, uh, the engineers are taking measurements on, uh, some walls to see what's, uh, the best way to do. Maybe we can improve things from the old, uh, code. Uh, maybe bring it up with not too much, uh, expense, uh, to meet maybe some of the newer codes. And that's one of the things we're looking at. The school sign at Christiansburg High School, that is ordered and, uh, it's coming in. Uh, interestingly, we, we were expecting at least two bids. We had two interested parties, we got one bid. And, uh, we made a couple of adjustments based on it only being one, but it was ri- right in, in the area that we were expecting as far as the budget goes. So, that'll be in, uh, looks like, uh, that will be up early April. Shawsville Middle School, uh, gym, the gym floor and the bleachers, that's one to do this summer. And, uh, we're planning on bidding that in February, uh, for, uh, right after school gets out. Probably take the gym out of commission for all summer. And I think we're moving Boys and Girls Clubs Summer Program to Eastmont Elementary because they use the gym a lot. So they'll be moving to Eastmont Elementary School. Uh, the, replacing the soffits at the three nineteen-sixties elementary schools there. Uh, the A C M, if you don't know, is asbestos-containing material. That's why we couldn't just scrape it and, uh, paint it again. Uh, but that's one I'd like, I wanted to get done for a long time. And we'll bid that out at the end of this month and for summer work as well. Falling Branch Roof Project, uh, that one is completing design. The engineers have been here a couple of times, taking measurements and making plans. Uh, the roof wall flashings, that was, uh, project we added after all the, the heavy rains and end of September. Uh, the first one we're gonna tackle is some longstanding problems at Blacksburg Middle School. We almost got the engineer there, but, uh, the tragedy that happened a cou- couple of weeks ago sort of, uh, put that work off. But we'll get back to that and I hope to get that done before the summer. Uh, floor tile and ceiling tile at Bellevue and Shawsville Middle School, uh, working on that. Uh, planning to, to do it this summer, as well as the multipurpose room at Harding. And, uh, the Falling Branch in Shawsville Middle School, uh, replacing the bathroom partitions. So, depending on, uh, the funding situation at the end of the year, we'll either use, uh, on, on those last couple, we'll either use, uh, this year's money or next year's money. But we'll have them all planned and ready to go. Some of the booster projects and other type projects, safe routes to school. The county, uh, planning office is coordinating that with the designers. Uh, we don't have, uh, preliminary design, uh, to show you, you yet, but I expect that to come in within the next month or so. Uh, Blacksburg High School, the track amenities, uh, the tree windbreak had, has been planned and the brick walls are in process. Uh, Auburn High School softball field sprinkler, I imagine they're gonna get that when the, uh, springtime comes and get it in there before the softball season starts. Uh, B H S, the press boxes, uh, are in. I don't believe the flagpoles and trees are in yet at those two fields. Uh, Christiansburg High School, a couple of things there for the, uh, baseball field. They're going with a ten-foot, uh, fence in the outfield. Part of it was ten, the rest was five. They wanna improve it and we're helping them out. We're using our fence contractor for that. And they're also gonna put some brick dust and improve the warning track. Eastmont Elementary and Blacksburg High School, a couple of projects just, uh, starting to percolate. Uh, Eastmont has a grant and for, the Virginia Tech Architecture School contacted Mr. Kits and said, we'd like to do a project, uh, for you. And we're working on something there. Uh, and then we just got one in, late last week. Eagle Scout wanted to do some mile markers at the C P S E S cross-country course that Christiansburg High School has. And we'll work with them on that. And Gilbert Linkus, uh, they wanna put up an electronic school sign. And we'll probably use the same specifications that we did on the others and put that up. We thought we'd talk a little bit about, uh, the community input meeting we had last week. Of course, all of you were there and I think you all saw all the comments and, or most of them. And I tried to go quickly through them, but, uh, you know, what we did, by the people who wrote their name down, we had a little over sixty people. There may have been more there that didn't write down. I know the papers reported about a hundred, which, but it was a good crowd. It was good. Uh, and our next meeting, same format. Uh, if you have any suggestions for anything extra, but we're planning on the same format, same questions, uh, on the twenty-fifth at seven P M. at Falling Branch. Uh, I don't know if you wanna go over these, uh, these are, we summarized in all of the comments that we got on the pages. And we have it in a Word format that we can send you. We also have an Excel file of everybody that signed up. But.
Yeah, if you could send us the Word file, that'd be great, it's a little easier to read.
Yeah.
Yep.
If you want, I can go over sort of what we did last week.
Have a brief, just some, quick summary of each?
Sure. Uh, the question one, uh, to help overcrowding, would we consider redistricting? Primarily, uh, that first part of that question was, uh, redistrict in other parts of the county. And that had generally, uh, number more noes, uh, than yeses. Inside the Christiansburg strand, that part of the question had, uh, many more under, more acceptable. And, and yes, to help make things work. If you build a, one new school, you, you know, you can actually, uh, in the Christiansburg area, you can actually, i- if it's big enough, move, uh, some overcrowding areas, overcrowded, uh, classrooms. Reduce those, reduce the mobile units by adjusting, uh, within the strand, the attendance zones for the elementaries. And there is the possibility that with one new elementary school, you can get rid of all the mobile units, uh, in all the schools. And by adjusting the attendance zones. And, uh, so I, I think that's what people saw. And of course, that's not a big, uh, change. They still feel we're in Christiansburg. So, I think that was what, uh, you, you all had mentioned when we talked about it and I think that was confirmed. Uh, voluntary alternative, alternative attendance zones supported by a bus. Uh, that was one of the out-of-the-box ideas, uh, we had. And that, that one, uh, people were sort of okay with that. It had, you could see five noes and six yeses. Uh, I think it might be good for some people. Uh, we could put it out there and, and, and see. And, uh, if we can fill a bus or a good portion of a bus, it may, it may be an opportunity. Uh, the question about targeting new developments to go to other schools with capacity. Uh, that out-of-the-box idea had a, a less affirmative response than eight noes to two yeses. And I think most people buy houses based on school districts. Uh, but it, it might be in, in the course. And maybe not in Christiansburg, but maybe, uh, if it comes time, we might, may have to do it in Blacksburg if, uh, we get to a point at one or more schools there. Uh, question two, should M C P S change their planning standards? Uh, to allow elementary schools with up to nine hundred students? Mostly, uh, noes, nineteen noes, some yeses. Uh, there was, uh, someone, there were a few people there that were, uh, you could tell by the comments, very focused on, uh, saving taxpayer money. And, uh, there's the comment I noted there, uh, in this one, yes, all these decisions should minimize costs. And of course, that is, uh, something we should always, uh, be thinking about. Uh, you might consider, you know, the, the current, uh, standard in the planning standards actually goes up to seven hundred and thirty students. I think it's three hundred to seven hundred and thirty. And, uh, I was thinking on Eastmont Elementary Prices Fork floor plan, at the end of s- uh, some of the hallways, there's the, uh, outdoor classroom that has a roof over it. And one of the ideas when we planned that was, well, if we ever grow, we could fill that in. And if we filled in three, I think there might be three, maybe four. If we filled in three or four of them, that would bring it up from six fifty to seven thirty. So, it's just one idea. And the last comment in that question, uh, one larger project would improve facility standards faster for more students. Uh, a couple agreed with that and that was the, uh, one of the main ideas of, of raising it. Because we're not gonna get a lot of projects all at once and just make the most of what you have. Question three, should we pursue short-term solutions? If the short-term investment delays a new school, well, maybe not. I gotta, if you read through the comments, they say, well, uh, a lot of people wanted to see, uh, a fully new, up-to-date school. And they thought if we do the short-term projects, that might delay that. Also, the comments seemed to point to one new elementary school and growth for Falling Branch, uh, additions to Falling Branch as reasonable. Since, and I think that's what the feasibility study said. Uh, whether we make Falling Branch six fifty or up to nine hundred is the two basic things. It's feasible to do either and it's a school you wanna keep. You don't wanna get rid of Falling Branch, so. And I think everybody's expecting probably, uh, a new school as well. And it's just the comments, the second to the, the last and the third to the last comment. Uh, I underlined that only if it would not delay required new construction and, uh, not at a cost of moving forward with construction of a new school. And six sort of agreed with that. And that's the general thing out of that one. Question four, should the existing old Christiansburg Middle School, uh, be used as an elementary school? Uh, many more, uh, comments, uh, on the less acceptable side of that, uh, than on the more acceptable side. If the existing, uh, Montgomery Central Buildings will not be used as an elementary school, how long should we use it? Uh, a lot of, the, well, the few comments that were there said, uh, use it for Montgomery Central as long as it's cost-effective and, uh, the alternative education, uh, use. And I, you know, as they mentioned here, we've moved that around in the past. And one of the ideas, the feelings coming from the comments is, uh, you know, it's there and available as long as they could stay there and we don't need it for anything else. Uh, keep, uh, the alternative school there. Question five, what level of renovations would occur? If, if we used that, those old buildings and occupied the spaces? I, right in the middle, uh, there's a comment that says, lots of money spent on a short-term project. Spend the money on long-term projects. Uh, two agree, but that was a general theme on a lot of, uh, the comments. Should the buildings be connected, uh, if they're used? The, that was, uh, yes, as opposed to having the kids walk outside from building to building, uh, campus style. Uh, should alternative education occupy a building on the, on that campus? And I think the feeling there from the comments is basically no, not if there's an elementary school there on the same campus. And should we change the planning standards to allow, allow elementary schools to have six hundred square foot classrooms instead of nine hundred to a thousand? Uh, basically, uh, I highlighted the, a number of noes there at the bottom. But the first comment with the no, uh, is one I think a lot of people felt that it establishes a different standard than the rest of Montgomery County elementary schools, especially our new ones. And we wouldn't wanna, I think they wouldn't like to step backwards, uh, from a better standard. These are only large because they were left over as the third page of, of comments. And question six, is it reasonable, uh, to consider using our Eastmont Prices Fork Prototype Elementary? Most of them on, uh, the, the yes and maybe and probably. Uh, lots of yeses, uh, there. And, uh, a few comments, no, no, or it needs, there's this problem and that problem. And I think the consensus, I would say, is, uh, yes. And, and we can certainly adjust any details that have found, uh, to have better solutions than we got the first time. You know, there might be some things, obviously, there will be some things we can improve on in the next iteration of that plan. And there are lots of, uh, other comments, suggestions or, or ideas. The, the first one, uh, I think a lot of people agreed with that comment. Twelve people would make a comment, then people would say, yes, 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 yes. Uh, that one, uh, that they think all elementary schools should be P K five or K five schools. Uh, I felt that that was a theme, uh, as opposed to how we have C P S and C E S, where we have one school with the primary grades and one, uh, the higher grades. In the center of the page, uh, it, it appears again, says P K five elementary schools are critical. Uh, C P S E A, C E S need to eventually be together. You had redistricting within Christiansburg is needed. Uh, six agree. Uh, one noted it's very important, the next person noted it's critical. And again, under that, all grades need to be in one school with art, gym, et cetera. I think that was one of the main themes of these extra comments of, uh, making sure we have, uh, pre-K five schools. And we'll, we'll send you the, the Word format to all that.
Yeah, that would be great.
And there was talk about, will we do this for the high school project? And, uh, certainly we can. And as we did the feasibility study, the elementary, uh, first one we presented to you and then the high school. Uh, we, we thought we could do the, uh, community input meetings for the high school at your pleasure, maybe in March. One, two, I know you wanted to get around with the elementary so people could see, uh, if you think the high school, uh, needs one or two or three, uh, whatever. Your pleasure, we're ready to do it. Uh, the considerations were less. Uh, basically, there were two. Uh, you can see them in the bullets at the bottom. Uh, do we want, people feel we need a new building or are renovations and additions, uh, a better solution? And then if it's a new building, is it an existing site or a new site somewhere? But we could, uh, as we did at the one last week, we'll give information. And then we'll put these considerations out. And then we'll put these considerations out there and let people look at the information, uh, ask questions, and make comments, uh, that you can consider. I'm sorry, it, do you, how do you want to pick dates?
Do we think March is too soon to do it? I mean, we, we're getting into the elementary, uh, we're, you know, we're going to be finishing that up. My thought would be that March may be a little too soon to do that one. We, I would, I would think that we would need to postpone that one a little bit more. My personal feeling, I do think, um, uh, for me, I think the elementary schools are a lot more critical than the high school, although I'm not saying that the high school is not, uh, important. But, um, I just, to me, I think I would like, I would delay it a little bit, you know, even if it's just a few months before we add that meeting.
Other board members, how you feel about it?
When do we start getting back into budget stuff? You know, when do we get our back from the board supervisors and have to start redoing budget? I just worry if we push it off, we're going to get into budget, then we're in the summer. That was my, my only concern with putting it off.
That's a good point.
It might have a better turnout, too, if it weren't so bad weathered. I mean, you know, everybody that was there were teachers, you know, and I, we didn't have a whole lot of public out. And it was, it was a cold night, and I just, my thoughts, if we could push it back a little bit, it's just, I think people are more apt to come out on a nicer night.
Try it in April, I mean, we'll approve our budget beginning of May.
So we'll be working on it in April.
Everything else, yeah, between now and then. So the April, April is better than March?
I'm thinking May might actually be better.
That is true.
We're done with the budget.
That is true, yeah.
Should have nice weather and all that.
Maybe do one at the end of April, one at the beginning of May, because you don't want to get too far into May, because then we get, we got graduation. Not only high school, but college.
There are a lot of events, uh, May, around May, too, that parents, we need to be attending, probably.
Attends to be more the end of May, though, first of June.
That is true, also.
So I, I was thinking the very first of May, if we did that.
Are we, are we thinking one meeting or more than one meeting?
We need to offer two, at least.
Do we need?
I think one. It's just one building.
I was, you know, thinking one for, for the high school. I mean, the reason I think we did more than one for elementary, we have many elementary schools that we wanted the public to see, at least.
And that is the next project, elementary.
And these are high-level planning questions, uh, when we do get it, like, I said at the meeting, when we do get the funding on the horizon, you know, we'll get into a lot more details and have more planning meetings with more detailed questions and, uh, comments, so.
So try to, try to target first week of May?
So one, at, around the first of May?
And obviously at Christiansburg High School.
And obviously, this goes without saying, let's make it on a night that is least conflicting with as many things as possible. You know, whether it's sports or...
At a high school, that's hard.
And that's why I was suggesting, too, because there are going to be natural conflicts.
We also have to coordinate with the gentleman from OWPR if we want to have him there, too.
We may present more than one day in that sense.
It takes time to do it, we just need to do it, set a date, do it.
At least get one of them.
Keep going round and round.
I think there'll be a lot more meetings in the future.
Okay.
That's what we do.
And I don't have, these are the last two, uh, former school proprietors. I don't have an up, any update on that, Mark, I don't know if you heard anything from Craig on, on those that were not.
No, actually, I, I met the other day with, um, um, Mark Burr.
Verneal?
Verneal, actually, and, uh, and I've heard a couple of perspectives on that situation, and, um, and we're sort of in the middle of it at this point. And, uh, so hopefully, um, you know, uh, things will move forward here soon.
All right. Any other?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next on, on the agenda is for board members to report on the recent VSBAC sessions. But, um, prior to doing that, um, I'd like to recognize you. This is, um, Board Member Appreciation Month. However, we have moved the actual appreciation or the, um, the, to the more, to the March first meeting with other recognitions. But, um, you know, I would like to publicly say, you know, thank you for all, all that you do. You know, a, a lot of times, folks don't realize the amount of work that you put in, um, for, uh, and this is your second or third job, and you, uh, really, the compensation is, is obviously not what you do it for. Uh, I just actually asked about the compensation the other day, as to how much you actually get paid to do this, and, and it's, uh, it's very little. But you do it because you care about kids first, and you care about our schools, and you care about our communities. And, uh, I, I truly appreciate what, what you folks do and the time you, you put in. And, um, and, and a lot of times, only you know how much time is put in, 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 in being a school board member. And then to go out and actually run for an election is, is incredible that you actually do that. I think it's, uh, it's pretty, pretty awesome. So, uh, thank you so much, and the next meeting, we'll, we'll recognize you publicly, okay? Uh, now, uh, just to open up to, it was four of you who went to the last, to last week's VSBAC sessions. If any of you have any comments or thoughts about that?
Ms., Ms. Graham, would you want to start?
Um, I'm going to feed off of the community college meeting that Dr. Meyer had. One of the things we learned from, um, I believe he was the Director of Commerce, and he talked about, um, what jobs will look like in the next ten years. And, you know, businesses, they're, they're talking to, to bring more jobs to Virginia. Um, and I thought it was quite interesting that the statistic he gave for the types of jobs needed was sixty-five percent non-college jobs. What I mean, non-college, non-four-year college or above. Um, so sixty-five percent of the workforce that these businesses are going to need and are asking for are going to be ones where we can make a big difference. We have that STEM certification now, um, these, these students will need a certification. New River, um, and all of our community colleges in the area offer, offer a lot of those programs that get those children out there to the trades for internships and apprentices, uh, very fast with very little debt, and we, we have to recognize that piece of it. So, I'm very anxious to see that partnership, um, with community colleges, uh, grow so that, you know, we do provide more opportunities for our students and get them ready for, uh, this new workforce.
Mr. Tobacco?
Yeah, I had a, a few, I guess, observations, things. Um, one idea that came up was the, um, in one of our sessions was, uh, I guess a lot of districts do a student, uh, school board member or members, and I thought that's something representative, so I thought that might be something that would be, uh, good for us to explore. You know, learned a lot about code of conduct and parliamentary procedures and board norms and things like that. I think when we have a, a retreat, maybe some of that stuff, you know, maybe we can hash some of those things out that are, that are maybe, uh, lacking or not as defined for us. You know, the, this idea of practicing continuous improvement came up, um, as a board, that, just this idea that, that as a board, we always try to, to be improving things. I think I, I have a book on it that I'm happy to lend any other board member that wants to read it. And, uh, yeah, I guess the encouragement to have work sessions, that came up, and we've obviously already talked about that, so, helpful stuff.
I'm glad you said something about the student on, on the school boards. Uh, my, my previous school board had two student representatives from the high school that were seniors, and, and, uh, they add greatly to the conversation. Uh, it's very, very nice to have, uh, stu-, you know, students, um, at the meeting to, to give their point of view. And for some, and for students who have been in our system for, for many years, too. And, uh, that's something that I would like to look further into for us, and how we would do that. To school divisions I've been in, one, it was a rep from each high school, and, uh, it's because there's only two high schools. And so, we have four high schools, just thinking about how that might look, and, and to make sure there, our, our students are represented either on a, uh, rotating basis, year to year, and but, but I would like to talk to you folks about that, I think it's a great experience for the, for the students as well, uh, to be a part of this process. Uh, I thought it fascinating when they asked, uh, new board members to stand up. There was actually a new board member who just graduated high school last year. And, uh, I thought that was, he actually ran for election and won. And, uh, that was pretty remarkable, that was really neat, so.
Well, I want to add, you know, we had a high school student on our six-year planning, um, and, and I hear from, um, the staff that that was a, that was a great, um, voice to have on there, a different perspective.
Absolutely.
I think I've pretty much shared everything that I got out of it and that they haven't, I think they've covered it all, so.
Yeah, pretty much, but, you know, I was going to, um, say also, it was good to meet with our delegates, Yost and Rush, and on the hallway with Senator Edwards, so it was a pretty successful to be able to actually see them all. And the parliamentary procedure, uh, session was very interesting, you know, little things that we do differently, not necessarily completely wrong, but we can improve. Um, and the gentleman gave that speech, uh, was wonderful and willing to come and talk if, 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 you know, board desires to do one of our retreats. And at the end, uh, I actually purchased Parliamentary Procedure at a glance book, and I think, uh, Ms. Fraggot, and then they ran out of it, but I ordered one for each board member, and it's pretty handy, they made it really nice and understand what to do. So, we'll be receiving those, I think School Board Association is going to send them, uh, a little cheat sheet.
Much better than the real thing.
Yeah, I mean, this was, this is, this is, this is, this is easy, this is much better. Um, the governor's speech was nice, and the chancellor of Virginia, uh, Community College System, which pretty much summarized what, uh, Ms. Graham said. Uh, and then the governor's budget review was interesting, and, um, I think I listened the same gentleman third time, and I was hoping each time it would little get better and better. But always the, you know, portrait he paints, you know, is always bleak. But I think this year is much better than last year's, uh, in, in that sense. I think that's pretty much the rest is covered, any, anything else you want to add, uh, board members?
And I, I felt, I was going to say, I failed to mention the meeting with Delegate Yost and Delegate Rush, that was very nice to be able to do, and, and, uh, they gave us a lot of time, a lot of time. And they listened, and, and they heard us out, um, may not have agreed on everything, but that's okay. But both have, uh, care about this community greatly, and it was good to have those folks, uh, representing us, and Senator Edwards, too. We had a great hallway discussion.
Hallway discussion, between two meetings, and we just had it.
Yeah, but he was working hard for us, too, and we, we appreciate that, too, so.
You know, there was also Standards of Quality Session for the board members. One, um, percentage or the statistic that I got out of it, which actually both delegates, especially Delegate Yost's, uh, you know, agrees that something has to be done, and the SOQs just, you know, some, has to be looked into eventually. The number is, uh, between eleven and two hundred and thirty percent. Uh, our, our school systems uses over SOQ money given. You know, I, I guess eleven percent, big minimum, and two hundred and thirty percent. So localities pays a lot of money over SOQ funding, so, and I think, you know, probably putting something in the seventies, it, it will be nice to be at one point looked into. And so that's, that's probably wraps up, I mean, I can talk hours and hours, I always get so excited and take so many notes. I want to take forever to report. That will wrap up our superintendent reports, Dr. Meyer. The next item will be unfinished business, do we have any unfinished business, uh, school board members?
Uh, retreat date.
Yes.
My calendar is filling up.
I was going to say that on the announcement information part, but unfinished business, it is. Let's see, where's my little doodle, doodle pull by hand, how is that? What I gather from all the, um, information, the March nineteenth
There was a doodle sound?
Is a good day. No, it's my, my own, no, no. It's just my email information gathering. And the next one, uh, will be the May twenty-first. And the, provided the fact that May twenty-first will end before seven o'clock, because we have graduations that weekend. And, and, and then I think Ms. Fraggot was hoping to get out of the retreat by six o'clock.
If it's on that day.
On that day, the, the nineteen, or the, or the twenty-first.
On those two days.
On, on those two days.
But I'm, I'm available, I just might have to leave a little early.
So I think Ms. Bond and Ms. Franklin, um, are, any of those days will be good for you.
What days did you say?
March nineteenth.
This March?
That's correct. It's a Saturday.
Not really.
The next one will be then, May twenty-first.
Be on Saturday, and since I have to work, I'm probably already booked by March nineteenth, so I'll have to push it to May to be able to, you know.
So can we, can we, because only May day is May twenty-first right now that we all agree. Because otherwise, we have to look into summer months, which I didn't go that far.
Yeah, I, I will have to check with that date, because I don't have it marked, but there's something going on there, I know.
There is the high, there is the high school graduations, for sure, I know that.
Yeah, that weekend, high school graduation weekend, but we're hoping maybe we'll get out of the retreat before.
So what hours are you thinking this retreat's going to happen, on Fridays and Saturdays?
We're just looking at Saturdays.
We just look at the Saturdays.
Starting probably pretty early, I assume, like eight, seven, eight, eight.
I mean, we just consider, um, Saturdays, if the board is willing to consider any other day, weekday, Sunday. I'm, you know, open to reiterate the availability, but with the Saturdays between all of us, and we can always go to June, July, August, too, but we try to, you know, the consensus was sooner the better, so we can...
Got to check the May date.
Sure, if you let me know, then we'll, I'll let you, I'll let Dr. Meyer know. Any other unfinished business for members? And we'll go to new business.
Uh, I have one item, uh, our public address, and how that's actually, uh, what's, what's permitted, and who's permitted, I guess, is with our, uh, recent issue around the flag. We had several folks who, not even from our county, not even from our state, quite frankly, take up our time, and it didn't affect them at all. We, our public address is asking folks to give input about our school district. And if you're living in Rafford, Floyd, North Carolina, Tennessee, you're not paying any taxes, you're not doing anything to support the school system. So I would like for us to look into how we can make sure that that time is So I would like for us to look into how we can make sure that that time is used more wisely.
I was wondering about that, too. I mean, when we mentioned that public address, we say the education issues pertaining Montgomery County citizens. So it's a good question, not sure what is allowed, and what is not allowed, in that sense, we'll figure that out.
Sure.
Thank you.
I did talk with Brad about that before. He did say there is precedent for us to do something like that, if I remember correctly, and there are several school divisions within Virginia who do have that policy. You have to live within the county to actually speak during public address, so, you know, I would follow up with him, obviously, with that, but I do remember him saying that that is a possibility.
You know, when we say, you know, state your name and address, I always had the, you know, thinking that there should be somebody living in our county, because that's why we ask them to state their name and address. But it's a good, good question, too, I think, for us to figure out. Any other new business board members? Then we have announcements and informations. I have a few things. If you, any other board members have any announcements and information, before I jump into... Of course, VSBA reports, we talk about it. I also attended the almost mains, you know, Christiansburg High School Theater, and somebody moved from Maine. It was fun to watch their little Maine skits, even though I think they were making fun of some of the Mainers, but it was all, it was all fun and okay. It was really nicely done, it was, it was really great. March 7, Board of Supervisors meeting, when Mr. Meadows presents the budget to the Board of Supervisors, probably, I don't know, at this time, they ask us to attend and be in the audience to answer their questions or not, but I just wanted to put the date out, so it would be nice if, you know, some of us will be able to attend. The others, little information I have, I've been approached by Montgomery County League of Women Waters. Mr. Wayne Warner sent me an email, and the league would like to get together with us, so they're inviting us to attend, so they will, you know, get to know each other, and have some social setting, and targeted, if we are willing to, targeted timeframe was mid-April. So I don't know what board's desire will be. I think in the past, that happened. Am I correct, Ms. Drake?
They canceled.
They canceled. So I guess they're trying to reschedule mid-April, if we are willing to.
For me, I'm going to be honest, we've got enough meetings on my agenda for now. I mean, I think it's great, but I don't, you know, I, I, by the time we do feasibility studies, and try to do a retreat, and try to do this, and, and budget coming up, that's about all I can, can muster, as far as nights a week, still having a child in school. So, that's my thoughts.
My understanding wasn't attendance required kind of gathering, but just a, one of the, you know, meet whoever makes it. But of course, if we are, none of us will be able to make it, probably. They don't want to, they don't want to put it together, either. Other board members, do you have any feeling whether I should say yea or nay?
I mean, if I'm available, I'll attend. I just have to kind of put some dates out there and see, I think.
Yeah, that's, that was my, that was my answer to him, that I, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would echo that. I mean, I think the league is an important organization in our community, and I would certainly like to support them if, if I can, so I would be happy to meet them.
So they will come up with a date, and, you know, you know, we'll see. They will get in touch with you, Ms. Drake, in terms of the date?
They haven't reached out to me about this event.
They haven't?
No.
Okay. Then I will, I will be the liaison, since they reached me out. And I'll bring the dates to the board, and if we can make it, we can make it. If not, we'll excuse ourselves at that time. The, I think last little announcement, I would like to acknowledge Ms. Drake, because this is the VSBA Board Clerk Appreciation Week, and we thank you so very much, all you do. And I have something a little bit coming.
I was hoping I got a, got out.
I know, but I hope you, because that's supposed to be next, whatever, next month.
It's not a great place to get a picture.
And I think we talked to retreat days.
When is the Board of Supervisors' public hearing on their budget?
Twenty, it's not, and my, and I know the seventh is the one that Mr. Meadows presented, and I think it could be March 22nd, but I could be wrong.
We have a joint meeting with them in two weeks.
That is correct, February 29.
We can add the count, the budget calendars to the agenda. I think the budget was part of the discussion, anyway. We can make sure those dates are brought up at that time.
I couldn't, can't really read.
Oh, we can make sure that the dates are brought up at that time. We've got budget on the agenda, but we can make sure we do a combined calendar, where we talk about, you know, we're done now, it's them, and then it comes back to us again.
Yeah. I just need to know when their public hearing is.
Any other announcements and information? And meeting is adjourned, board members, thank you. Oh, we did not look at upcoming, I'm rushing. I think that it's too, too early to finish, it's all right. Thank you, Ms. Fraggott. Yeah, the upcoming school board meetings is the next one, the feasibility we have, and then the joint meeting with Board of Supervisors, then we have March two, March meetings, one being work session. I hope I can... Any questions regarding the meetings? Then the meeting is adjourned now, it's 8:17.